Two.
Good evening and welcome to the November 30th work session of the mayor and city council. Tonight, we have one item of discussion, although it's a big one. But before we get into it, I want to make a quick announcement. The Board of Supervisors of Elections is holding a virtual forum on Thursday, December 10th, at 7:00 PM, which is a week from this Thursday. The topic to be discussed is the voting method for the 2021 city election. Members of the city council will participate during this forum. The board invites the public to participate in a survey to gather their input on this topic. The survey will be available through 5:00 PM on Thursday, December 31st. And for complete public forum and survey information, go to gaithersburgmd.gov/elections or contact Elections Clerk Lauren Klinger at 240-805-1087 or email lauren.klinger@gaitersburgmd.gov. And with that, we will begin our work session tonight. We're going to be talking about the COVID-19 social impacts and responses and the FY21 grant and committee updates. And to lead us in the discussion, we have Britta Manaco, who's our Director of Community Public Relations, and Maureen Herndon, who is the Division Chief of Community Services. And I just want to note that tonight you will be seeing per capita more heroes in our community than I think at any meeting of the year. So, welcome, everybody. We're glad to have you with us, and I'll turn it over to Britta and Maureen.
Thank you, Mayor, and that's a wonderful way to phrase what you're going to be listening to tonight as our heroes. I mean, it is our pleasure to join you in this virtual world to talk about the social service impacts of COVID-19. A couple of months ago, you received a briefing from the Economic Development Department about the impacts to businesses and the state's overall economic landscape, both now and what's projected in the years to come. And tonight, we'll be exploring the impact of the pandemic from the perspective of our Community Services Division, providing an overview of what the city and its partners are doing to assist the residents of this community. I kind of like to think of tonight's presentation as a sort of virtual replacement for the nonprofit meet and greet sessions that you've enjoyed over the past few years. Obviously, we're not able to take you into the field to show you what amazing work is taking place. So tonight, we're bringing some of our providers to you, asking them to share with you firsthand what they're seeing and what's being done collaboratively to assist those who are struggling with unemployment and hunger, health and mental health issues, and the rising housing crisis. And later in the evening, our Community Advisory and Educational Enrichment Committee Chairs will provide a glimpse into what they've been doing to ensure that the city's grant money is being put to its highest and best use to address so many different aspects of the crisis. As we speak, the committee members are reading reports from our grantees. They're very impressive and reviewing needs assessments that paint the kind of broad scale picture. And in the coming weeks, they'll be needing to review the grant allocations for the second half of the fiscal year and coming back to you with recommendations at one of your meetings in early January to talk about funding for the next six months. I just want to say that despite the horrors of the virus and the economic devastation it's causing, this crisis has really highlighted the resiliency, creativity, and compassion of Gaithersburg. I think what we've been able to accomplish as a city thus far is the result of years of thoughtful and effective collaboration with our local nonprofit providers, with our faith-based organizations and local businesses, and the residents of Gaithersburg as well. We've tapped really heavily into those relationships that we have forged to quickly coordinate efforts to address the most urgent needs. And I cannot begin to adequately express my admiration for community services staff, Maureen Herndon, Tawana Lofton, Carla Contreras, and Lauren Sukal, and the many other city staff members who have been working with us side by side to address the crisis. They've worked tirelessly and creatively to think and rethink how and what we're doing, often adjusting the process midstream and frankly, sometimes even midday to deal with it all. Their creativity and their resilience is impressive, and more importantly, I think it's impactful. So now I'm going to turn things over to Division Manager Maureen Herndon, who's going to start tonight's presentation, and we look forward to answering questions later.
Good evening. We're going to start with package page five. I wanted to start out by thanking Mayor and Council, senior leadership, and every city department that have assisted in the work of community services these past months by sharing their talents, expertise, and time with various new programming and day-to-day operations. We also like to send a special thank you to our old and new nonprofit school congregations and city residents and business partners, rising to assist in addressing these unprecedented health and economic challenges being faced by so many of our city residents. As Britta said, I'd like to welcome Tawana Lofton and Lauren Sukal, community service staff here who are on the video call and are available as well for any follow-up questions. As background, Community Services Division and priorities as part of the city's strategic direction, focus on strengthening the community by addressing the human service needs and safety of all city residents through collaborative efforts with schools, businesses, nonprofits, and other organizations. We do this through information and direct assistance, community education and programming, partnerships and outreach, nonprofit grant program, and our educational enrichment and community advisory committees that you will also hear from the chairs a bit later. Next slide, please. Package page six. COVID-19 has impacted every aspect of what we do. Relative to our scopes of service, though, the biggest impact on our city residents have been in the areas of housing, food and nutrition, healthcare, and vocational services. We will hear from our partners in each of these areas tonight in just a moment, addressing both COVID-related needs and program responses. As far as direct service by community service staff, just to give you a comparison, in all of FY20, community services staff in the city's Housing Division served 52 unduplicated city households with CDBG-funded rental assistance and provided a myriad of other services to a total of 366 families for the whole year. In the first quarter of FY21, which began July 1st, Community Services has provided CDBG-funded rental assistance to 18 unduplicated households and 28 as of mid-November, and other services to a total of 568 families, an obvious indicator of the impact of the public health and economic crisis that our city residents face. As of the end of October, we have worked as community service staff with over 700 city families, a 466% increase from last fiscal year. We've also been working with the city's Neighborhood Services Division with clients benefiting from our Gaithersburg Hoarding Task Force. And through the work that Tawana Lofton has done, we've implemented the Financial Navigator Program through a grant with the Cities for Financial Empowerment in partnership with HIP, Housing Initiative Partnership. A massive outreach campaign for this program involved the posting of over 8,000 door hangers by our public work staff and neighborhood service staff, giving city residents an opportunity to get counseling regarding their overall financial situations and information on how to access state, county, and city resource information and assistance. Dialogue is currently happening between community service staff and the county's 311 program to potentially develop a more streamlined referral process and partnership. Resource materials have also been distributed at food and testing sites and via all of our apartment communities. We continue to concentrate on work and effective programming and outreach in our main areas, as you see on the slide. Equitable multicultural outreach, comprehensive case management and coordination, housing and homeless assistance in conjunction with our homeless division, hoarding task force, ongoing food collaborations, vocational program enhancements, which you'll hear about a little later from our partners, health and mental health programming and information, and of course, the Financial Navigator Program that we're actively promoting. Next slide, please. This graph depicts COVID-related housing assistance funds and FY21 community service grants to our nonprofits in critical service areas. Just over $1 million in FY21 city nonprofit grant funds has been once again approved in the Community Service FY21 budget, along with the city's CDBG COVID and non-COVID-related funding of $152,500 for housing assistance and $65,900 to support COVID-related housing assistance case coordination with Shepherd Pratt and support for job trainings and certification through a special grant with career catchers. This chart also reflects $80,000 in a COVID-related grant that the city received from the Cities for Financial Empowerment for our Financial Navigator Program. Internal discussions will continue as staff evaluate the needs for use of CDBG funding going forward. We will now focus on the priority areas that we mentioned before of housing, food, vocational services, and health with presentations addressing both needs and programming by our FY21 Collaborative Community Service Grant nonprofit partners. Next, please. Package pages eight, nine, and 10 will address what is being seen and offered in the area of housing. I would like to call up and introduce Carmen Castro Conroy from Housing Initiative Partnership, Inc. and Tarsila Burkhart from Shepherd Pratt, formerly Family Services, to see what they, to address what they are seeing as it relates to housing challenges, followed by some highlights of services being offered in the housing area. Next, you can, okay, so we'll call up Carmen and Tarsila, who will start with package page 11. I'm sorry, package page eight.
Good evening. So what are we seeing? The pandemic has created significant problems. Many in our community are experiencing loss of income and having difficulty paying their rent. I would like to share some data from a new research on the growing back rent during the pandemic. This information was recently shared at the Weekly National Call on Coronavirus, Housing and Homelessness, sponsored by the National Low Income Housing Coalition. It is reported that 23.5% of renter households have experienced unemployment between March and August of 2020. Just in October, 17% of renter households were behind on rent. Average rent debt among those behind on the rent by December of this year will be 5,400. Rental delinquency rates are higher for Black and Hispanic renters, renters with a high school education or less, female-headed households with children, and low-income and extremely low-income households. Renters are relying on unsustainable resources to meet spending needs. They're borrowing from family and friends, using credit cards and loans. They're spending down their savings or selling assets. So, who are the most affected here in Gaithersburg? Gaithersburg renters are not much different from the rest of the nation. Before the pandemic, the Chair of Low-Income Renters in Gaithersburg were suffering a pre-existing affordable housing crisis. This group continues to be the most affected and are very much experiencing the extent and severity of the continued hardships brought by loss of income due to the pandemic. These are our low-income renters, primarily Hispanic, young immigrant families with children, for the most part, previously employed in service industries, many of them now eligible for unemployment benefits with limited access to technology, transportation, and healthcare. In response, at the federal level, the CDC issued a temporary moratorium on evictions that is scheduled to expire December 31st. The CDC noted that homelessness increases the likelihood of individuals moving into shelters, which puts them at a higher risk for COVID. Many evicted renters move and share housing with friends or family members and potentially increase household crowding. Residents may find more difficult to take actions to protect themselves from COVID-19 if evicted. At the state level, the executive order from the governor dated March 16, 2020, still protects individuals who have experienced substantial loss of income due to job loss, reduction in hours of work, closure of place of employment, or the need to miss work to care for school-age children. Montgomery County and the City of Gaithersburg continues to provide much-needed rent relief financial assistance to those most affected by the pandemic. What comes next? Unemployment insurance benefits are scheduled to end on December 26th. The CDC moratorium ends December 31st. We expect to see a rise in cases while the state of emergency is still in place and until the economy recovers. Struggling families need financial and legal assistance to prevent eviction, landlord tenant mediation services, case management and coordination among existing programs. Let's all aspire to be the city that treats its most vulnerable members as our very own. Thank you.
Thank you, Carmen. Next slide, please. We'll give you Carmen's contact information. And she's with Montgomery County Housing Initiative Partnership. Next slide, Tarsila from Shepherd Pratt will address some of the new housing programming going on. If we can call up Tarsila.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being present in this meeting. As Carmen exposed the picture of what has been going on with the residents now that they're facing the consequences of the pandemic, I'm going to be bringing to you what we're doing to address the need of help in the area. So first, we are working through the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, that was a funding from the CARES Act that the City of Gaithersburg contracted Shepherd Pratt, formerly Family Services, to support those impacted by the COVID-19. In our program, the Neighborhood Safety Net Program, we provide a client services coordinator and a bilingual housing counselor, and they work together and they provide emergency assistance for utility cutout, mortgage, rent, food, housing counseling, foreclosure prevention, financial literacy, because the goal is not only to provide the funds for the client, but to address the needs that the client have, screen the client, identify what a source of help they could qualify for. Is that employment? Do they need to improve access to education? If they need food, we have our client service coordinator delivering the food for the clients that need the help the most. And we also have intensive case management services, which consists in our staff calling the clients. At least once a month, we need to follow up with them to understand where do they stand after receiving the help? Is there any other need that they have and we need to address? And as we know, as people are losing their employment, they might come next month or next week with a completely different need from the previous need of mortgage or rent or food assistance. We are located in Gaithersburg. We have been working remotely. However, we go to our office at least twice a week to receive applications, to help clients to submit applications for rent assistance, utilities, or anything else that they need. You can see my phone on the screen. If you need to refer anybody to us, or if you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. Thank you.
Thank you, Tarsila. We'll now go to packet page 11 and address what we're seeing in the areas of food and bring up Jenna Umbriak from the Manna Food Center, followed by Suki McFadden, who will give us an update on a new program through the Gaithersburg Cares Hub.
Thanks, Maureen, and thanks to the entire Community Services Division and to the mayor and council for having us here. My name is Jenna Umbriak, and I'm the Director of Programs at Manna Food Center. I'm speaking on behalf of Manna as well as our partners on the food and nutrition contract, Nurish Now and Gaithersburg Help. I want to, I'll mention these three points. First, that we are experiencing a tremendous surge in requests that probably won't surprise anyone. Talk a little bit about who we're seeing coming to us now. And lastly, talk about all the changes that COVID has necessitated in what we serve and how we serve. I'd like to go to the next slide, please. Thank you. So these graphs show the number of individuals served by each of our organizations over the last several months. So prior to March 2020, we were actually seeing a decrease in the number of people who were needing assistance, and this all changed mid-March. In April alone, Gaithersburg Help served 276 new families, so families that hadn't turned to them before. And at the height of the first surge, which you can see happened around April-May, Manna was seeing six times the number of new participants we would normally see in that time period. You can see that, starting in September of 2020, we're beginning to see another increase. And so far, the data for October and November indicate a second surge that we anticipate lasting through the holiday season at least. The chart to the right, Nurish Now's graph, shows a similar increase. The numbers here seem even more dramatic due to the fact that Nurish Now changed its distribution method from mainly serving scheduled households from their headquarters to conducting a series of grab-and-go distributions at schools and community centers and churches that didn't require preregistration. And I'll talk about the way that we all had to change our models in a second. But I'd also like to make a point about who is coming to us. We are seeing that immigrant populations, specifically Latino households, have been most impacted, or at least have been the group that are seeking assistance the most. Prior to the pandemic, 35% of Manna's participants identified as Hispanic or Latino. And at its height in May, this percentage rose to 51%. For Gaithersburg Help, the percentage of households served that identify as Latino rose as high as 74% and is still well over 60%. These numbers are even more alarming when you consider that only 20% of the Montgomery County population identifies as Latino. We know that there are people who are more hesitant to reach out that are still hurting. Manna has focused specific outreach funds and efforts on members of, reaching members of the African immigrant community, partnering with grassroots organizations that can help us build trust and awareness and facilitate referrals with these cultural groups. With Gaithersburg being one of the most diverse cities in the nation, we know that focused community engagement is going to continue to be crucial in this area. So that's who we're serving and how many people we're serving right now. If we can go to the previous slide, package page 11, please. So while you're getting there, I was mentioning that Nurish Now had to change their model, and really, all of us had to incorporate new safety measures and other, and deal with other challenges that really changed all of the way we operate. For instance, Nurish Now had seen recovered food decrease by 80%. And donations and food rescue are down for Gaithersburg Help and Manna as well, making food purchasing the main source of food for all of our organizations, a much more expensive prospect. Safety precautions have challenged us to do more work with less staff and volunteers in our facilities. We've changed service models to be outdoors and distanced drive-throughs where prepackaged items are shared have replaced the choice model that we had set up at Gaithersburg Middle School, for instance. While Gaithersburg Help always had some aspect of delivery, Manna and Nurish Now had to pivot and make no-contact deliveries a new part of our model to protect those most at risk. We've been fortunate that these precautions and these changes in strategy have paid off so far. As we like to say at Manna, we've been staying safe while still serving. Still, we're concerned about what the future holds. How long will this next rise in service numbers be sustained? Regardless of that acute shift, we know that the recovery for many families will take months, if not years. Nurish Now specifically has concerns about how future openings of churches and schools and community centers might impact where they can distribute food. And all of us wonder about any additional implications on the supply chain or new safety precautions that will have to change where, how, and what kind of food we share. We're so grateful for all of the support from the city that has allowed us to get this far and to serve this many. Financial and logistical support will be crucial to make sure we're prepared to support city residents with food access in the uncertain times that lay ahead. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Jenna. We'll go to packet page 13, please, and call up Suki McFadden as Director of the Gaithersburg Cares Hub at Seneca Creek Community Church.
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much for having me. So I just wanted to give a brief background about how the Gaithersburg Cares Hub got started, for those of you who don't know. So earlier this spring, I think it was in May, we got a call from the city about the Black Rock Center, which was operating up in Germantown, serving a lot of Gaithersburg families. And so the need sort of became apparent that Gaithersburg also needed to open up kind of a food delivery center where we could serve COVID-19 sick families and other families who were just in need for food. So back in May, we opened up at Seneca Creek, and the sole focus of our basically entire summer was delivering food to the homes of families who were sick with COVID-19 or for whatever other extenuating circumstances could not get out to get food. And so we sort of did this part-time as we were still doing church online, which we are obviously still doing. So then, I guess by the time it got to be August or September, we all thought we'd be back in church. Well, that didn't happen. And so the county came through with funding to sort of continue the hub. And so we sort of relaunched in the fall to continue with our home delivery services to the COVID-19 sick families and then sort of expand to do other services. And from my understanding, I know that Montgomery County is trying to open up these hubs in various cities with the idea being that eventually these hubs will become large consolidation centers for all kinds of service, not just food, but whatever other kinds of assistance in terms of housing, jobs, or counseling, that kind of thing. But for now, obviously, the focus is food. So while we're still engaging in delivery to local families who find themselves sick and the idea that obviously they get to quarantine, and that's a win for the entire community. But we're also trying to expand into the populations that we're reaching. And one of the things, it's a program that I really, really love. We've, actually, I think Maureen coined the term of a adopted neighborhood, where we're trying to, it's almost like a reverse drive-through where we're trying to go into neighborhoods where we know there's a high area of need. Because I have found, at least in the short time that I've been doing this, is that lack of transportation is a big problem for a lot of these residents. And I also think that because we are a little bit, I don't know, maybe smaller is the right word, but, and maybe a little bit less bureaucratic, we tend to get a lot of people just sort of calling up and just saying, hey, I need food. Can you help? So the Adopted Neighborhood Program sort of allows us to identify these areas of need and go into these neighborhoods. And sometimes we're able to drop to every single doorstep. We're not always able to do that in some of the bigger ones. But I really like the model of going into places where there are people who haven't even necessarily requested help from anybody, or at least not from us, but we know that the need is there. So we're still trying to work with churches, PTAs, anybody who's willing to kind of come alongside with us and help us get into some of these neighborhoods where we know the need is high and we might not necessarily be seeing them come out to call or to come to a drive-through or something like that. And speaking of drive-throughs, because we understand that the need is so great, one of the first things that we tried to do was sort of do a single-parent giveaway each month. And when we saw the response to that, it was so incredibly high. We knew we just had to turn it into a monthly drive-through. So we just did our first one back in November, and our second one's coming up on December 13th. And honestly, we didn't do a ton of advertising, but the response was very high. So we know that that's a big need. And I know that we're considering expanding that if necessary, but for now, we're just going with the once-of-month. And I know that we're considering expanding that if necessary, but for now, we're just going with the once-a-month model for the drive-throughs. And then the other thing that we're doing is we're giving support to existing groups who are maybe engaged in food distribution but need help with diapers and formula and wipes, which is another big need that we've seen. So it's been nice that we've been able to come alongside some of these groups and help them distribute the diapers and the other necessary infant supplies to some of the clients. But it's, it's definitely been a, an interesting experience working in this environment. And I was just talking with my coworker today and we were just talking about how the need, at least from our perspective, is so very high. And we just, phone call after phone call of people just asking for food. So we are located at Seneca Creek through June of next year. And I should also mention that, I think, I don't know if it's completely official, but the Lake Forest Mall area is going to, I think, become what we're calling a sub-hub of the Gaithersburg Cares Hub and their focus area is going to be in Montgomery Village. I know that they've already hired someone to run that, so I'm assuming that it's all going to be up and running probably by the end of this year. So we're going to work closely with them to make sure that the needs in Montgomery Village are also being met.
Thank you, Suki. I think you can go to the next slide. Is that right? There we go.
Okay, sorry. So I think this map shows some of the, what we call the in-neighborhood-based distributions are. And part of what we did is we took our delivery lists from the summer and we literally sorted them by street to see where we had large clusters of home delivery for the COVID-sick patients, understanding that these are probably also neighborhoods where there's just a high need amongst everybody, not just those who are sick. So here are some of the places that we've been to. Yes, definitely. And we're trying very hard to not make it what we call a one-and-done thing, where we really want to come alongside these communities and serve them on a regular basis, not just one time. So, for example, St. Rose of Lima Church has been great in partnering with us to help serve a senior apartment complex in Gaithersburg. And they, they've, they've been doing that at the apartments requesting once a month with groceries and produce. So that's been very nice. But as you can see, and I think the next slide will show the, the bulk, not the bulk, well, actually, yes, the bulk of our deliveries and a big area of concentration for our in-neighborhood distributions are in the 20877 zip codes.
Next slide, please.
Yeah, sorry.
There you go.
Yeah, and yeah, it gives you over half of the households that we have been serving. And this is, I think this graph just shows the home delivery aspect of it, which is the majority of what we were doing up until just about two months ago. A lot of 20877.
Thank you, Suki. Oh, sorry. Okay.
Yep, that's it.
Suki and Jenna. We now like to go to the next slide and our next concentrated service area of vocational services and call up Gerard Etienne, the Director of Vocational Services with Interfaith Works. He'll be followed by Mona McNeil from Career Catchers, who will talk about some innovative programming. So we can turn to Gerard.
Gerard, you're muted.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sorry about that. Can you hear me now?
Yep, go right ahead.
Okay. So I was just saying that it's, it was very interesting to listen to the other service providers for, you know, housing and food, because we in vocational services are, are essentially seeing many of the same things. And it's, it just kind of highlights, for me at least, the, just how interconnected are the services that we provide are and how absolutely critical they are to the clients we serve. You know, these are so very challenging times for the clients that we see. For vocational, this is due to several factors. Number one is the scarcity of available jobs. Since the beginning of the pandemic, this is anecdotal, but I would estimate conservatively that about 40% of the jobs that were available to our clients have disappeared and disappeared. And particularly hard-hit has been hospitality, so hotels, restaurants, and retail. We're still placing clients in retail jobs, but nowhere near the, the numbers pre-COVID. Another significant issue in the job market is that the majority of the jobs that we find for our clients are part-time. So for FY20, some, almost 65% of the jobs that we placed our clients in were part-time and the remaining 35, 34% were full-time. So when you think in terms of earning a living wage, particularly in this area, you can, you can see how, you know, part-time work is, is just not going to cut it. And we're seeing clients who we've placed before in part-time jobs come back to find for other, to find for another job, to look for another job, I'm sorry. Another major issue is technology. There are two issues there, actually. The, the lack of technology skills, computer literacy, and the lack of available tools. We are trying to provide Chromebooks and affordable laptops to our clients. Unfortunately, there is a, there's been a nationwide shortage of these devices. So it's been a real challenge to get these devices in the hand of, in the hands of clients. Another issue that we're seeing, this is not as common, but it is a problem in its automated interviewing systems that some of the larger employers have moved to. So for clients, obviously, who don't have the technology skills and don't have the tools, this is a, this is a major barrier to employment. But it's the same for clients who are not English proficient. We've had several clients decline interviews because they were so intimidated by that, this automated interviewing format, that they just couldn't go through it. And then I would say just overall, just the urgent needs that some of the other providers have, have mentioned are things that we're seeing as well. We are, some of my counselors are having to direct me as well, having to direct clients to resource assistance like rent, food, utilities, filing for unemployment. And clients are just distracted understandably, you know, from doing vocational work because they have critical needs. And the human toll also just cannot be overstated. We have clients who are foregoing medical care. I've, one of my clients has recently had a medical emergency because he kept pushing back, you know, his doctor's appointments because he didn't have the money. So these are genuinely existential threats that our clients are facing. And you can imagine, on top of all that, not being able to, not knowing how are you going to pay your rent or how are you going to pay for your next meal, takes a significant toll. And like some of the other providers mentioned, the impact is hardest on people of color for FY20. Over 80% of the clients we served were either Latinx or, or black African-American, African-Americans. And, and that, that's where, you know, the, the population that is being impacted the most. The good news is that we're still able, still able to place clients in jobs. It's just a lot harder and takes a lot longer. So that's it for me. I will now pass it on to Mona McNeil from Career Catchers. So next slide, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm Mona McNeil from Career Catchers. It's a pleasure and an honor to be here tonight, and I thank all of you. So what happened in March was we realized, we thought we were going home for two weeks and going to work from home for two weeks and then be back in the office. And as everyone knows, that was a joke. So what we realized almost immediately was that there was a need out there. Our clients were in desperate need of help. First, they were losing jobs. They didn't know how to get their unemployment. I don't know if you all remember back in March and April, but the whole unemployment system was crazy. The CARES Act gave them extra money, but no one seemed to know how they could get it. They would get onto the Maryland system and things were just a mess. So we applied to the greater community, the Washington Community Foundation, saying, you know, we really need to help people with this critical issue right now. Every day, we're getting phone calls. So they gave us a small grant, which allowed us to hire two temporary workers, one of whom's job was really just to understand the unemployment system and how to help clients apply to it. We did workshops. We did one-on-ones. We helped a number of, I think we helped over 120 people with their unemployment claims, either as a, in a group session or one-on-one. Many of those were city residents who were helped. So that grant came at a perfect time because we now had two more people on staff. And after the unemployment issue was an issue, then of course, there were other issues people were having. They were losing their jobs. They weren't sure if they were ever going to get their jobs back. As Gerard mentioned, a lot of the jobs that previously our clients were able to do were going away. They weren't able to do them. So we were working very closely with our clients, saying, let's look at training. Let's see, you've got this skill in customer service. How can we pivot that into something that you can do in this new environment? And so, again, with the people we had hired for this other work, we started finding classes that people could take online that would give them training in certain areas. We worked closely with Montgomery College. And so what happened was that we ended up getting a 30% increase in our clients doing training online and certificates. So overall, what we had to do was we had to increase our outreach, right? People had to know that we were still available to help them. They had to know that we could do it virtually, whether that was just a phone call or a text or a Zoom session. And so our demand for our services increased by 54% between March and June. Part of that was through the outreach of letting people know. In the city of Gaithersburg, we've been working as a partner since 2014. So between 2014 and now, we had worked with 160 individuals. We reached out to all those people who we had previously served. We reached out to all the partners in Gaithersburg, many of whom have spoken tonight, to say, hey, look, we're still, we're still helping clients. We're, please make referrals to us. And so what we saw, as I said, was a 54% increase in the number served. That was through doing these weekly email blasts, where we then also morphed into having those be sort of a community resource. We tell people not only about the workshops that we're holding that will help them find work, but we tell them about training opportunities, jobs that we hear about, other community resources. We let them know about the housing resources. We let them know about the food resources. And so we feel that by putting those out every week, we have another connection with our clients. And those are also available on our website. And that was all new, sort of in response to clients expressing a need for these things. For our job clubs, which we've always held up in Gaithersburg, we saw 175% increase in our attendance. And I chalked that up to a couple of things. When we had a physical job club, which is basically a time for clients who need help with a job application or they need help with a resume, or they might ask for what kind of training they could take. It's sort of everything related to work, but in more of a group setting. So when we had it physically in Gaithersburg, you know, somebody might have to take two buses to get there. They might have to find childcare. Their childcare would fall through. So on average, we'd have about four attendees a week, maybe. When we switched to a virtual format and we very clearly had current topics that are going to help you today, you know, we did unemployment. We talked about work-from-home opportunities. We talked about training that would allow you to work from home. We saw a 44% increase in city residents who got jobs as a result of attending our job clubs. So it became a very, it was very much of a silver lining. I don't know that we ever would have thought of doing our job clubs virtually, but now that we know that the transportation issue and the childcare issue were really a barrier to people coming, I think we'll always have some kind of hybrid system where we'll continue that. The other important thing, as I mentioned, is the training and scholarships. And in the city, these numbers that I'm representing here, the 54% increase overall, the 175 increase in attendance, and the 30% increase in training are just our city numbers. Across the board, those are very high also, but for the people we're serving in the city. So, so far, and I think that number's gone up since I created this slide, but somewhere between 11 and 15 city residents have completed some kind of workforce training. As Maureen mentioned in the introduction, we also have a $20,000 vocational scholarship grant through the CBDG program. And we've worked, we're working closely with Interfaith Works. We're working closely with Catholic Charities. We've presented at our partner meetings, the city partner meetings, to let people know that these scholarships are available for city residents who want to, let's say, get a medical assisting degree. That degree costs about $2,000. It takes about three months. But in the end, somebody can get a job with almost a livable wage. So there are certain scholarships. If people get them, they will be able to get better employment. The other thing that I mentioned earlier was the unemployment insurance benefits that we help people file with those. The county approached us and asked us to become a processing agency for their emergency assistant payment program, which put cash, it was, is cash assistance to people who were ineligible for unemployment or ineligible for the stimulus check. And through that program, overall, we've helped about 150 families. But within the city, that number's also gone up since this chart. We've helped 20 city families get cash assistance. And the total is about $23,000 worth of cash assistance in the hands of city residents. What we found through that program is that the majority of the people seeking that assistance are not, are Latinx. They usually don't speak English very well. So we've been using the language line to be able to help process those payments. And it's caused us to have our next hire be a bilingual counselor. So, and we, we continue to help those families with other things as well, not just those cash assistance programs. So I think that sort of sums up what we've done. And what we're going to plan to do going forward is to keep a lot of these programs. I think the other area that Gerard had mentioned is the technology, the issue of technology. And we're finding ways to try to get around that. Almost everyone has a cell phone, so for a lot of things, we help them with a cell phone. We've actually received some donated laptops from a local business and we've gotten those fixed up. And we've given some city residents laptops. We also got a donation of Chromebooks from another business, local business. And we're, we've created a lottery program so that we can give those to our clients as well. We, we joined up with the Housing Opportunities Commission. They had a Chromebook program that, that several clients were able to get Chromebooks through. We've been talking to Montgomery County Public Schools, saying, hey, look, you've put all these Chromebooks in the hands of children who are in school. Let's make it so the parents can use those in the evening so that if they need to do a job application or they need to file for their unemployment benefit. So I have hopes that that will happen before too long. We haven't quite gotten that. But there are a lot of Chromebooks in those households and we'd like our clients to be able to use those as well. So I think that is pretty much everything I had hoped to talk about.
Thank you so much, Gerard and Mona. And I just wanted to point out, Mona referenced Catholic charities, which is actually Spanish Catholic. which is actually Spanish Catholic Center located in Gaithersburg. It's the third agency that's part of our vocational collaboration funded through the city, working with many, many, especially folks with English as a second language in the same way that Gerard and Mana mentioned. So we're thankful for all three agencies. Now, we're going to move on to what we're seeing and how we're addressing health challenges. And Peter Lowitt will be pulled up. He is Director of Mobile Med, which heads up our health grant collaboration here in Gaithersburg. So you can pull up Peter. Thank you.
Terrific. Good evening. I want to echo others by thanking the mayor and council and also community services, Maureen and her team for, for the incredible work that they're doing. So with respect to health, I think the overall theme, it's not going to surprise you, is that COVID has really been a multiplier. It's both for direct health issues and also for social determinants of health. And I'll go into a little bit of detail. Now, counterintuitively, there is a lot of untreated mental and physical health conditions going on right now. People are deferring care, both for, say, their ongoing chronic conditions, but also things that are arising. That's either due to anxiety or due to logistics or due to just, you know, fear of financial implications and other things. And they're also ignoring self-care, in part because of the stresses. Again, the multiplier is incredible. And, and we're seeing, again, disparities that other people have talked about within the population. So I think it's more obvious now, the connection of these social determinants to health. And so certainly, job losses have an impact on housing and food and on other bills that all impact health. There is a, a lot of stress about the workplace right now. So for people, essential workers and others who are going to their workplaces, you know, wearing PPE eight hours a day is really stressful. So both emotionally and physically, the lack of contact with others has, has a real direct impact on health. And of course, the caregiving stresses, especially with in-person schools and much childcare not being available to families. It's put a huge stress on those, on those families. Our behavioral health leaders talk about some incredible challenges associated with COVID, the enormous grief and loss that, that many report. There's one example of, of a woman coming in and having therapy and sharing that she's been going to virtual funerals on a regular basis. And that's obviously an enormous challenge. Increased isolation, I think people have been reading about the direct health impact of that isolation. And then on the, on the financial side and on the jobs side, want to switch to, you know, losing insurance coverage, many for the first time in their lives has, has a big impact on their access to health and just their unfamiliarity with navigating the public benefits system, say, enrolling in Medicaid for the first time. Or the community health system, which the Gaithersburg Healthcare Network is really a, a big part in this community. The lack of familiarity as well as the stigma or the perceived stigma associated with accessing public benefits. I was remiss. I just want to make sure that you all understand I'm the executive director with Mobile Med, but I'm representing this evening the Gaithersburg Healthcare Network, which includes two other primary care clinics. That's Mercy Health Clinic and Holy Cross Health Center, as well as three other wonderful partners. Gaithersburg Help for their Prescription Assistance Program, Korean Community Service Center for their wonderful wraparound services with Mobile Med and engagement with Korean immigrant community and the Episcopal Church of the Ascension in Gaithersburg, which is a wonderful partner for Mobile Med. Next slide. So what are we doing? So again, another counterintuitive piece, back to the, you know, deferring of care. Our sort of standard medical visits are actually down during these last eight or nine months because of this crisis. So much of what we are doing is outside of those standard visits. And I'll share a couple of details. First, now, our standard visits have also changed. Many of our visits are now conducted via telehealth. And that's important for two reasons, both for, from the provider standpoint, as well as obviously from the patient's or client's perspective. So we have many volunteers who are not able to work in person. And so telehealth is really important, again, for us operationally and to keep people safe in terms of thinning out the number of patients and staff who can be in a facility at any one time. And it's had an impact on facilities as well. It's also been really important to patients. Again, both for, for psychological reasons, anxiety and the like, but also, again, just real challenges around logistics. You know, complications at home in terms of not being able to, you know, leave dependents at home, reduced public transit schedules, which has happened throughout this crisis, other things. So telehealth has been really very important. It's also, it's been particularly important, probably on the mental health side, at least at Mobile Med. Our behavioral health visits have grown during this crisis. So even though medical visits are down, because we're, and we're doing a lot of things outside of the exam room, behavioral health visits are up. And we're really, we're pleased that people are recognizing the need to get help. We're doing a lot around safety in the clinics, again, with both patients and staff. That involves triage, both when people are scheduling appointments as well as when they're arriving, doing health screening questions, taking temperatures outside of, of the clinic and so forth to keep people safe, making sure that people have a mask before they enter the clinic. Obviously, having even more PPE for staff. And so at Mobile Med, people are wearing not just masks, but they're wearing face shields and gloves and so for other PPE. There is a lot more in reach, again, for the existing, for existing patients. We need to reach out to patients. We need to screen them for both their health issues. Again, COVID-related health issues as well as their non-COVID-ish, particularly the chronic diseases that we may be aware of. And make sure that we can engage with them about that and case manage. And also, you know, figure out their treatment approach. And, and I'll touch base on that, the non-medical resources down below. But we are also screening for things like food security and housing security in our in-reach to patients and being proactive about that. With outreach, we really want to, and we've, we've looked, been looking to leverage where clients are most attuned. So we understand that, that people are, are most motivated around food, food access and around COVID testing. And so we want to make sure that we can leverage that engagement with clients around healthcare. So we are looking not just to share public health information and specific information about COVID for clients, but also more general health resource information to make sure, again, those people who have lost insurance and the like recognize that they need to take care of their non-COVID health right now and that there is a pathway without financial barriers with, again, the healthcare network that we have in Gaithersburg with these clinics. So again, not just Mobile Med, but Mercy and Holy Cross. And I would also mention around outreach is really important around COVID as well. Community services knows this too. They are getting phone calls from people not knowing what to do with developing symptoms around COVID. Some of the other agencies in this meeting tonight have been getting calls that they normally have not gotten around healthcare. And they need to connect to, again, health messaging around a treatment plan. And it's even more complicated for our patients around COVID because particularly in the immigrant community, there is a lot of anxiety. So for everyone, there's anxiety about the financial ramifications, about, say, going to the emergency room. Everyone worries about the bill that they might get. And we need to message very, and have been messaging very clearly that they're not going to be just crushed financially by getting the care that they need. For immigrants, it's even more true. So it's partially the financial situation, but it's partially the real concern and fear for themselves and their families around the implications for immigrants to access the healthcare system. And so we need to convince them and the agencies and community services in Gaithersburg need to convince individual clients to engage, that there is a pathway of engagement. And we need to, to be really focused on some of the key client needs during this crisis. And so we are making extra efforts around flu vaccines. The twin dynamic is very real. And flu and immunizing for the flu is really critical for everybody, but particularly, of course, the population we serve. We need to make sure that we have the capacity that, that, that is feasible to address the behavioral health issues. And again, again, back to those social determinants of health. We are very intentional about referrals to the non-medical community resources. We want to make sure that people do understand how to connect to all of the services that we've been talking about this evening around food and housing and vocation and so forth. And so we are being very intentional about that. Again, thank you very much and, and thank you to our partners as well.
Thank you so much, Peter, and thank you for the continuing lead this great collaboration. We are now moving on. Proud to introduce the chairs of our Educational Enrichment Committee and Community Advisory Committees, who oversee the community service and youth grants for the city of Gaithersburg. So if we could bring up Barbara Harbison and Stacy Simon, please. And we'll go to the next slide. Number 20. Thank you.
Well, good evening. I'm Barbara Harbison and I'm the Chair of the Community Advisory Committee. The mission of the committee is to explore the gaps in social services for the city of Gaithersburg residents. We develop annual statements of the needs and in priority areas for the issuance of grants or contracts to nonprofit agencies and organizations. We also review and evaluate nonprofit agencies, organization grants and contract proposal submissions. And we make recommendations to the mayor and city council for the funding of these agencies. And we perform annual site visits to nonprofit agencies and organizations. And obviously, we haven't been doing annual visits this year. Our committee consists of two members, Diane Dees and Barbara May. And I have to say that when we started in this year, we were interested in increasing our committee. And I want to thank the mayor for referring a couple of people who were interested, but COVID sort of interfered and we are off in a different manner and we got misdirected. So we're hoping to be able to get back to add more members to the committee in this coming year. The other thing I'd like to do is to really thank the council for increasing our funding this year. We sorely needed it. And I do want to issue a thank you on behalf of all the providers and the committee for that increased funding. Stacy?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. I'm Stacy Simon. I'm the chairperson of the Educational Enrichment Committee. And on behalf of the other nine, other eight members who I will introduce to you, Teresa Wright, Ellie Elridge, Mark Ezrin, Jason Wilcox, Justine Toseco, James Simpson, Beth Kennington and Jessica Barelas. We are proud to serve, as I mentioned, on the Educational Enrichment Committee. Our mission is to collaborate with families, educators, nonprofits, businesses and other stakeholders to encourage and support creative, impactful, inclusive and rewarding programs that enrich educational opportunities within our community. Barb, are you going to talk about the first three items?
Yes, could we have the next slide, please? Thank you. Well, this year caused a lot of unprecedented circumstances and caused us to go a completely different way. As a matter of fact, I remember that we were about to push the button to get our grant applications, open up our portal. And guess what? We've all closed down. This meant we had to have a different kind of response this year. So we held joint committee meetings. So our decisions now are not just from the Community Advisory Committee, but the EEC. So we had a joint response to everything. The other thing we did was we had to ask different questions than we had before. And since we had additional money, as I mentioned before, we needed to decide how to spend that extra money. For one thing, we decided to start off with whatever we gave them for FY '20. That we certainly weren't going to decrease any monies. But what were we going to do with our extra money? And we decided on certain key priority areas. Health and mental health, housing, food and vocational assistance. So these key areas we focused on to give the extra money that we had available. We also decided that instead of a year-long contract, it would be best to do a six-month contract to allow us to, to relook at those key areas and to see if we needed to adjust either the services or the funding.
Right. Britta mentioned before, there is a, we will be doing a mid-grant report overview. The nonprofit needs analysis survey is taking place. And in December, we will be having another joint committee meeting on December 10th, where we will focus on the recommendation for the next six months. And then in January, we, we hope to share our recommendations with mayor and, and council. When I am going to slide down. All right. So when we're looking at the different areas that Barb had mentioned, the one area that for education that we are really interested in is supporting the nonprofit school grants. is supporting the nonprofit school grants. I'm sorry, supporting the nonprofit school grants in the schools. So of course, you know, as everyone knows, we're not onsite, but the nonprofits are stepping up to the plate. And so we are working with them to address a growing mental health needs through mentoring, grieving, tutoring, or intergenerational services. And the one area that we we talked about a little bit earlier was the need for increased access to people who speak Spanish to help us along the way. Thank you very much.
So the next slide shows how our grant funding existed through December of 2020. I want to mention a couple of things when we look at this and how we we allocated money for FY21. First and foremost, I'm going to talk about seniors and individuals with disabilities. You haven't heard much about that this session. Honestly, as a senior with disability, at the time that we were talking, I said, what are you talking about? I don't want anybody near me and I'm not going anywhere. I was petrified. So that's not true today, but it certainly was then. And so when we looked at it, we decided that we would not put any additional monies there because we weren't quite sure what the seniors and the disabled community would really want and need. So I'm glad that it was a six month because now we can revisit that because now seniors know that there are times when telehealth doesn't really work. You have to physically go and see a physician, for instance. There are needs to come in and help us clean or whatever we may need. So those things are changing. So we might look at that being a different allocation for the next six months. The other one was food. We didn't put a great deal of, they didn't get a whole big chunk of additional money from us at that time. We thought that really food, everybody knows that everybody needs food and people would be contributing food. We thought maybe the federal government would get in, Montgomery County would get in. But we weren't sure about the housing situation or vocational coaching. So we we allocated the monies, although food got more additional monies. They didn't get the bulk of it. So we did a lot for vocational and housing. We're certainly going to be relooking at how we distributed the money going forward.
Thank you, Barbara and Stacy and all the committee members for your ongoing work and your presentation. We truly appreciate everything that you're doing. We can go to packet page 23 and I'll briefly summarize what we're looking at as far as community services. Of course, always in conjunction with our committees and with our nonprofit collaborators. And then we'll be happy to entertain any feedback or questions. So as you could tell through our nonprofit grant reporting and input and our providers meeting, our ongoing weekly calls with the county and our direct services, it's clear that we're going to respond at all. If we're going to respond at all, we will need to focus resources on the basics, housing, food, job training, as well as address growing health and mental health challenges for our families and youth. Because of the scale of the need and the fact that residents across all income brackets are seeking assistance, providers are continually working on moving towards regionally-based consolidated service models and increased collaborations. We're very fortunate that the city allowed for so many collaborations prior to COVID that have just expanded and blossomed. We're very appreciative of our nonprofits being so nimble and responsive to these changing situations. So in conclusion, we just wanted to go over the list of things that as of today, we're focusing on. We are focusing and in the middle of a holiday giving program that we coordinate. Of course, it's changed to a drive-through model. The November distribution went very well, was very respectfully done. And actually, we may continue drive-through models going forward, even post-COVID. We're continuing our ongoing research and needs analysis on a day-to-day basis, especially getting feedback from our nonprofits and our clients. We're continuing our providers' meetings and trainings that Carla coordinates out of our office. We've had 80 representatives at our last providers' meeting to make sure we're all collaborating and know about each other's resources, as well as at a training that she coordinated on mental health issues. Because of the scale of the need, we are looking more and more at strengthening our collaborations to make sure, to ensure strategic use of our resources across the board. We have been working on the, with the county on expanding city-based testing sites. We're particularly concerned about the residents of 20877. The Activity Center has hosted two events, which is wonderful, as well as the Latino Health Initiative is now at Lake Forest Mall. The city of Gaithersburg, through its G I S department, has an incredible COVID-19 dashboard. For all that are interested, you can access it through our website. It gives you ongoing numbers of COVID cases, but more importantly, ongoing, real-time places you can get testing, as well as all of the food resources. So we really want to thank our G I S department for the incredible work on mapping these important resources. We've gotten compliments from other jurisdictions to our city's G I S department and it's well deserved. We're working on revamping our outreach efforts to develop more culturally appropriate resources. We're really going to kick that off in January and we're starting to talk with some community-based groups like Identity that actually has residency residents that are ambassadors right now in some of our Old Town neighborhoods that we hope to partner with more on outreach. We're going to continue dialogue around the development of the consolidation hub that Sukie had mentioned with the county and with our nonprofits. And of course, one of the areas we haven't brought up, but is emerging, is the increase of domestic violence and suicide situations. We've begun talking to our homeless outreach workers, as well as our police department, to plan for more outreach and information to city residents around resources in these two areas. That will also kick off in January. So I just wanted to thank you all for your time and attention. And we're all, city community service staff and the presenters are open to any questions or comments.
Thanks so much, Maureen. I just want to start by saying thank you to you and your team at community services and to all of our presenters tonight, Carmen Tarsila, Jenna Sukie, Gerard Manna, Peter, Barbara, and Stacy. What you guys have, what you guys exhibit and the way that all of you have stepped up in your different ways and in in serving the community in the way that you serve it has been instrumental in keeping our community in relatively good shape. We've all, you know, communities across the country, across the world, have been impacted. And I feel like we've, with your help, with your leadership, we have really done as much as we could here in Gaithersburg. We can, we can look at ourselves in the mirror and say, we have, we've put it all out there for our community when, when, when the chips were down. And it's really, it's your leadership that has been an inspiration and made a, made an enormous difference in this community. And I look forward to a time, I've told our council members a couple of times at this point, that when this is all over, we can get together, there's going to be, there's going to be a time where there's going to have to be a lot of proclamations and physical manifestation of our, of our thanks to you and to your best volunteers. I'm actually going to, I'm planning to reach out to all of you to find out who, who your best volunteers have been in the city of Gaithersburg so we can, we can get together and honor everybody on that magical date, which, you know, seems to be coming at some point where we can get together and honor everybody. I wanted to mention to Barbara that I do, I actually have another person in mind for the community. So that should be coming soon. You guys will be hearing from me there. And I want to especially thank you, Barbara and Stacy, because that's really cool, the way that your two committees have worked together in such a smart way. I'm just, I'm impressed and very appreciative. So, so thank, thank you and thank everybody. Actually, I don't have any questions other than how can we, how can we help? But I think, I'm sure we're going to be hearing more about that from Maureen, from staff. Ryan, I see is sort of desperately raising his hand. I want to give him a chance to chime in here. Go ahead, Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't really have many questions, more, more comments as well. This is such critical work that all of these folks are doing and that many others who are not here with us tonight on this, on this meeting are doing. I got to say, I'm glad I was able to volunteer just a little bit of time for the Gaithersburg Cares Hub a few weeks ago, delivering packages of food to those in need. Because I've got to say, it's one thing to sit at a meeting and debate policies and funding and, and plans for how to help those in need in the midst of this unprecedented crisis. It's quite another thing to go and see directly the personal impact, the powerful impact that this service delivery has directly for the people who need it. And so to echo what the mayor said, as we are in the season of giving thanks, I just want to also offer my sincere thanks to the community services division staff. You are stalwart, passionate, unwavering in your commitment to this mission, to all of the volunteers, especially the folks on our committees, the leadership of our committees who presented tonight, and all of the other volunteers out there who helped to provide the direct service delivery to all of our nonprofit partners. You all are just amazing and this is such an incredible testament to the values of the city of Gaithersburg and its people. But I also want to thank the taxpayers because the city of Gaithersburg, as, as the mayor alluded to and as some of our presenters mentioned, has really been unique among municipal governments of its size in our region in terms of its commitment to funding these needed social services. And I remember, you know, back during the impacts of the Great Recession in 2008, 2009, 2010, different than what we're going through today, but also a very trying time. And we had some, some important discussions about how these are the times, not when you cut funding for these critical services and these safety nets, these are the times when you increase funding, if you're able to. And we are in the fortunate position where, as the mayor said, you're not, you know, we're not without our many challenges, but we at least have the resources and the stability to provide additional support. And so I'm really proud that the taxpayers have supported city leadership in always saying that during these times of crisis, we need to step up our game and we need to help those among us who are in need. And, you know, I just think it's important to acknowledge that. And so I want to thank everybody who's been a part of this. And I think that the plan for doing the six-month extensions on the grants makes a lot of sense in the midst of an emergency. And I think that the committees and the staff have thought it out well and I support that approach as a special circumstance, given what we're going through. Thank you all again. I really appreciate your great work.
Thank you, Ryan. Sukie, was that, that you want to speak?
I do. I didn't have a chance to say because I just wanted to say two things. One is that I wanted to make sure that I gave a shout out to all the city staff. A lot of them were working very closely with me over the summer when we were sort of trying to cobble together all these deliveries. And I just was amazed at how the city staff were just so willing. I would bat an all call and they would just come and they would just drive and they came all the time. The city aquatic staff, I can honestly say, without them in the past two months, I don't think I would have been able to operate the way I have been. And they're all volunteering their time and I know that they do have time. But I just, it's just a testament to how wonderful, I think, the personnel that you have working for you are. And the other thing that I just wanted to point out is, I don't know if people realize, but over the summer, from May till September, all the food, except for the 50 mannequin bags that we got each week, that was all donated by the greater Gaithersburg community. I did not, we didn't, we didn't have any funding from the CARES Act or anything. We ran the entire summer on volunteer power from the city, not just city staff, but all city of Gaithersburg and from community donations. And that's pretty incredible. I don't know if people knew that. So I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you for doing that. We'll go to Maureen and then Stacy Simon.
Since we're doing thanks, it hit me that, you know, in these months, that we really need to thank our city families and especially youth that are suffering the most through this because their displays of like strength and caring for their families and trying to make things work has really been impressive. A couple of the families that I work with and have gotten to know pretty closely, their middle schoolers are running their families. Their, the middle schoolers are communicating what their family needs while they are going to school, while they are taking and coordinating the food deliveries and taking care of their younger brothers and sisters. So I want to thank our city families and youth that are especially affected by this COVID for their commitment and hard work to really get their families through this.
Thanks, Maureen. We'll go to Stacy.
Yeah, so, you know, I have to always chime in. And so I wanted to make sure that a special thank you went out to community services, to Maureen, Lauren, Tuana, Britta, Carla, and Sukie, because I had the privilege of spending my summer at the, and it's the first time I've seen Sukie without a mask. So hi, Sukie. But I got to spend this summer helping out at the Gaithersburg Cares Hub. And it was such a rewarding experience that even I had my husband, David, join in a couple of times and have him run to Costco and buy diapers and wipes when, when the, when the numbers were getting low. But again, just the amount of, so, Tinesha, I hope that you are enjoying your, your first few months with the city, but we are so excited to have you be part of our family because especially this community services family is just an amazing group of women. And shout out to everybody over at community services. So thank you.
Shout out to David because it's been a long time since he's had to buy diapers.
I'll be sure to let him know.
Been a lot of years. Okay. Who else wants to say a few words? Go ahead, Mike.
Well, you know, we can never say thank you enough to all of the people involved, our, our nonprofit partners and our fantastic staff and the leadership they've exhibited. So I won't, I won't try and repeat everything that's already been said. I do want to say what's impressive here is, you know, the needs of many parts of our community have been known for a long time and they've been magnified by the pandemic. And I think our ability- And they've been magnified by the pandemic and I think our ability to respond here. Has helped us understand and underscore where those needs are and, and. Where we can help the appropriate role for the city. And its many volunteers and partners to be able to help address these so that once this pandam- pandemic is over. We can continue to address the needs of those, those parts of the community. So it's good to see. A recognition of how these partnerships work. How the merging of the, the work of the two committees. Is important to kind of develop some solutions on the fly. It's, it's kind of. Like everybody involved here has been building the airplane while it's been flying, which is a really terrific feat. And it does deserve a lot of praise. But I think we also need to recognize, we also have to acknowledge and recognize some new ideas that I think we can continue going forward. Certainly, I think the idea of having a more flexible. System of, of doing the, the short-term, the shorter-term contracts gives us some flexibility. In terms of, of going forward, but also being able to apply some of the knowledge. That, that we obtained in the process of providing assistance to different parts of the community. I'm, you know, I'm particularly concerned about. I mean, we know about the, the needs for, for food and nutrition, but I think the other needs here are. Family and personal health, both physical health, but also mental health are, are really being stretched here. So. Recognizing that and the importance of that and working with our health partners, healthcare partners is, is pretty important. So. I, I'll be interested to see the recommendations going forward and adjustments to. How we've been spending the money that we've been able to provide, but also about. And then looking to the city manager for other sources of where we might find some more of this so we can address some of these needs. So. You know, to, to wrap up the comments, I just want to thank everybody here and, and especially thank. Citizens of Gaithersburg for being so supportive of these efforts. As, as been pointed out, we couldn't do any of this without the participation and support of our citizens and, and their concurrence with our decisions. As Ryan pointed out many years ago when we did this and we're doing it again. And I think. After, you know, attending the virtual National League of Cities City Summit Conference, we learned that many cities aren't. There are many cities of similar size or larger that aren't able to do what we've been able to do here. And it's largely because of. How the city's been cared, how we, how our staff has cared for the city, but also. How our citizens have cared for the city and their neighbors. So. It's a great family. We are Gaithersburg. I think that's the phrase, right? So thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Let's go to Neil.
All right, I'm going to keep this brief because my puppy is making a lot of noise in the next room. I'm taking advantage of a quiet moment. So I'd like to reiterate the thanks to all the providers and the volunteers on our committees. And our community services staff, you've all done great work, as has been said multiple times, stepping up when the need was greatest. I'm going to, I'm going to go back in time and, and say that this, this wouldn't be possible in a crisis where we've had to tighten our belts if it hadn't been for the. The entire staff of the city. And your sound fiscal management of the city. If we didn't have the resources, none of this would be possible. And we had to tighten our belts at the start of this because we, we knew that revenue was going to be tight. But as Ryan said, during a crisis like this is not the time to skimp on. Money for community services type work. And the reason we were able to do that is because the city's in such. Sound financial shape and hopefully we'll be able to keep it that way on an ongoing basis after this. So. That's for the five people that hadn't already been thanked. On the city staff and the financial staff, but everybody has really stepped up and I'm very proud to be part of this city. Thank you.
Thank you Neil. We'll go to Loriann.
Good evening. Thank you Mayor. I've been having some computer issues, so bear with me. I'll echo the sentiments of my colleagues. Thank you again for all that you do. I recall over the summer when the pandemic initially hit. I reached out to Britta and the rest of the Community Services Division staff to. Provide some updates so I could share it with the National League of Cities and share what we've been up to. And some best practices that we could share. And so seeing all of the coordinated efforts that are happening with our nonprofits, our volunteers. It's, it's just so reassuring to see that we're able to withstand the test of time. And so I look forward to hearing the recommendations that will come forth in January. I'm really grateful for the Community Services Division, the. A nonprofit advisory board. You guys are doing so much with so little, just three volunteers and such. You know, a little pot of money. I know we were able to do a slight increase when the pandemic first started and. Look forward to hearing feedback about how additional resources may be used to continue to support the families in need. I am not sure about the coordination with our. Our legislative director. We know that it's going to be key in asking for additional funding and sharing this information. So hopefully we'll have more information about how we're going to be reaching out to our federal partners for additional funding to get us through. The. Impact after a lot of these programs are sunset by the end of the year. I did have a question about the. Provider meeting. I believe Maureen mentioned there's over eighty providers that show up at these meetings. I'm wondering if we're also sharing information about our committee needs. I know that a lot of members can be recruited through clients. Or through those networks. And so I know we have a new infographic and would be helpful to share that with our partners if it hasn't already been shared. And the coordination between our health partners. I know that you guys are working even more closely together. So I was wondering if there's a joint infographic that we can share. About the resources that are available that we can share with our residents. That would have all of the information, especially since it's not just. The COVID nineteen pandemic, but just general healthcare information. Making sure people are still continuing to get those important screenings, knowing where they can get medication, et cetera. And so I'm, I'm just really pleased with how we've been able to respond and how we're working together and. Please continue to keep us. Informed of how we can continue to support those efforts and thank you so much again for all that you all are doing.
Thank you Loriann. Maureen, or maybe Britta can answer the question about the infographic.
I'm not quite sure what you're referring to Loriann. Is it the, the visual that's on our digital display boards in our lobbies? That is, you know, allowing us to recruit committee members, the one that we use to promote that?
Yeah, so I was talking about that one to share with our providers, but then.
Make that available.
Yes, yes, but then there's general information that's being shared or offered through our health partners. And I'm wondering if they've coordinated to produce. An infographic about what additional services they're able to provide and how residents outside of COVID nineteen can access that information.
Maureen, did you want to talk about the resource flyer that we have?
Yeah, yeah, we have a couple of resource flyers we've been keeping up to date. One is general services and contact information for all our different collaborations and we have it in English and Spanish. Then the health team collaboration has there another flyer just in relation to. All of the health resources available. Gerard worked with the vocational partners, so we have one just for the vocational collaboration. So there's several different. Documents that we post on the website and also have been print, printing. Tons of copies that have gone to the apartment complexes, the food distribution sites, testing sites. We're getting ready. To do another round of printing of those. So. They went in bags at holiday giving distribution and will again in December. So there's a whole packet of information. That we try to keep updated as well as the website, which. I'm still working on it. You'll see an updated version of that hopefully soon. But yes, I can share all the resource materials with you if you'd like.
Thank you Maureen. So not seeing any hands, before, before I let everybody go here, I want to make sure I give an opportunity, if there's anybody in the public. Who's an attendee and wants to speak, just use the Zoom raise hand function and I'll call on you. Go on once, go on twice. Okay, I'm not seeing any hands go up. So at this point, I want to thank everyone. For all that you've been doing and for all that you're, you're continuing to do to help our community. I want to note to anybody who's watching this, that if you want to find ways to help, your help is needed. Either through the Cares Hub, through donations, through volunteering. Through our nonprofit partners, you can find all of that on the Gate City Gaithersburg website, gaithersburgmd.gov. Right at the top, there's a, there's a little banner ad that, that says, you know, click here for. Information on how to get involved and help in your community. And as Maureen was saying, we keep that updated. We need your help, but, but that's not to say you haven't been like, as particularly as Mike said, the community's been doing a great job of helping. Suki, Maureen, everyone made that point. Continue it, please, community. We are the greatest city in the world because we make it that way. And, and so we appreciate all of you and we appreciate our residents and let's get through this, my friends. So to everyone, the next, we will be meeting next week for regular meeting in the mayor council next Monday. Which I forget the date, but it's next Monday. So we'll see you then. And until next time, I'll remind everyone, Winter Lights is going on. It is a perfect socially distanced activity. Get there early. It is packed because it's so perfectly socially distanced. It is packed. I took my family there last night. It's great. There's new. New displays and everything. Enjoy. And until next time, let's do great things Gaithersburg. We are adjourned.